Hello, I'm Mike Franch. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for attending today's meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Committee. I'm councillor George Northhammond, one of the co-chairs of this committee. We are now currently being webcast and members of public are welcome to join at any point. We haven't, though, received any questions or petitions from members of public by the deadline. Can we all check that we're not going to be disturbed by our devices during this meeting? I shall lead by example by just checking myself there. Okay, and we've got no fire test planned for today. And if there is an emergency evacuation, please follow instructions and follow signs. And the assembly point is in Tudor Square by Theatres. I'm now just going to ask the members of the committee that are present to introduce themselves. I might as well just cover now that we've had apologies of absence from councillor Wallhouse. And we've got councillor Bowden substituting. So shall I start from the right-hand side? And we'll just move over to councillor on the left and from my right side. So councillor Gensio.
Thank you, Chair. I am councillor Argentio, normally called Chair of this committee, but here as a member.
Councillor Martin Phillips, councillor for City Ward.
Councillor Victoria Bowden, councillor of East Ecklesfield.
Councillor Abdaam Mohammed, Firth Park, Chair, I have to leave at 12 o'clock today.
Councillor Sophia Said, Bungree Ward.
Councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor for Mosbury.
Councillor Steve Barry, councillor for Graves Park, Ward and deputy Chair of this political committee.
We've got councillor Ruth Milton with us, who's just struggling with technology moment. Okay, now we've done that, as there's a few things just to point out. All the agenda reports are on the council website. There are paper copies for anyone that needs them at the front today in slightly different way. There's, we're proposing to change the published agendas order somewhat today, just partly to facilitate the fact that there are some private papers which may need to be considered in the absence of present public. So what we're suggesting, as in terms of substantive items, we go in the order of 16, 8, 10, 11, 13, 15, 12, 17, 9 and 14. If I've got that wrong, we'll work it out. And that really moves on to just explaining that both, there's an appendix on item nine, which is private, if it is referred to, it's towards the end. We will then have to exclude press and public. So members, just be clear, when we get to that point, if we need to refer to that section, please flag that up and we will take the necessary steps. What is more certain in my mind is that for item 14, there is a more substantive private element that we think will need to be referred to. So at that stage, we will close the meeting to the press and public to enable discussion of that. However, the webcast and the public gallery will reopen for when we look at the recommendations for item 14, which will be conducted in public. So when we get there, we'll work out, we'll work out the practicalities of that. Here's item B on, part B on item 14, we think we will need to discuss in private. So moving on, can I ask if any members have any declarations of interest in matters for the committee today? Not seeing any indications. So if we turn to item five, which is the minutes of the previous meeting, I've just taken a moment to glance over those and see if we agree for those that were present, because I know it's not everyone here, that they were an accurate record of the meeting. They were happy to propose that they were accurate. As I say, councillor Martin Phillips over there, that's fine. That's fine, seconded, that's okay. All agreed that they are accurate, that's great. Okay, and as I said, we've got no items from the public petitions. So now if we turn to item seven, which is our work programme, and Sarah Brant's going to be presenting that for us today. You're going to find it, I know it's a bit difficult with all these papers today.
Thank you, Chair. So you have your work programme before you. The recommendations are that the committee approves the, or agrees the work programme as set out in Appendix One. And you consider whether there are any additional items that you would wish to be added to that work programme, Chair. We also ask that you consider as a committee if there are any items of member engagement or training that the committee feels that they require, that they would ask be added to the schedule set out at 2.2. And I can confirm that there are no referrals from other committees. So there are no items to approve actions for under recommendation four. So the work programme itself is set out at Appendix One, starting on page 26. Page 27 details, starts to detail the items on this agenda. And then the items scheduled for future agendas start on page 29. So ask members to consider those and give their agreement or ask for further items to be added. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you, Sarah. Has anyone got any either questions or any proposals based on that? I'm not seeing any hands, not anything to formally add, but it might be worth informing the committee that as chairs and deputy chair, yesterday, we discussed that it's probably very useful to have an informal session of the committee, particularly to focus on budget and things in line with all the other discussions around the budget in the next few months. And obviously, at that point, we can address some of the potential needs of another request of the committee. So hopefully that's welcome, but nothing to formally add to that. So I'm happy to propose that we approve that. Is that okay, everyone okay? No dissent from that? Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so moving on, we've now got item 16, which is Alexis's report and delivery plan. So yeah, I think Alex is just moving to position to present. Give your moment, Alexis, and that should be in your supplementary packs for those that are using paper copies today.
Good morning, everybody. So my name's Alexis Chapel, I'm the Director of Adult Health and Social Care in Sheffield City Council. And this is the report of the Director of Adult Social Care DAS report. It's the very first one of its kind. And what I mean to do is for each committee is provide an update report on where we're at with adult social care, but also set out some of the key progress made and including in the future of our performance and our delivery. And this is a way of ensuring that we are being transparent and accountable to committee about our progress as a service. So I want to start off by a thank you. And that is to thank you to all the social care sector, to our teams, to our leadership teams, to all our partners, and also to members who have really been supportive and consistently working well together to support us to get the best outcomes for people in the city, and recognizing that we are on a journey of change for adult social care. And what has been really, I think, fantastic over the last 20 months is how people have rallied around and tried to work together to get ultimately a focus on improving lives and outcomes for people of the city. And that's what adult social care is about. It's about people, it's about communities, it's about how we ensure that we deliver and enable people to live independently and well in their own home and in the communities. It's about our unpaid carers, who, one in nine of us will be at some point in time. And equally, it's about our workforce and our valued social care workforce across the city, and about the family members who will all be always affected by an individual who's in need of care and support. And that's ultimately what adult social care is about. It's about people, it's about communities, it's about delivering and enabling people to live independently and well. And we are trying to do that in amongst a very challenging local and national agenda. And, you know, one of the key things for adult social care is that over the last, particularly over the last couple of years, there is a real, you know, quite a significant local and national agenda. We have, in the last year, we have got the introduction of social care charging reforms, a fair cost of care and market sustainability planning, which you'll hear about today in the committee reports. Equally, we've got the introduction of an assurance framework and the introduction of greater integration of health and care, which we also hear about in November committee and also in due course, and also through the Health Scrutiny Committee as well in due course. But we've also got changes to how we address safeguarding, liberty protection safeguards, and also the Mental Health Act. And if that wasn't enough, we're also reporting on our social care workforce to the Secretary of State. So it's a busy time for adult social care, and it's a bit, the analogy that I've used quite a fair bit to colleagues a bit like the buses, nothing comes at once, then everything at the same time. And essentially, we have a very busy agenda nationally with the changes, but what we've also got locally is significant change that we are making to how adult social care works, both in itself and also with our partners. So we do very much focus on that delivering the very best outcomes for people and the committee. And finally, you know, one of the key things that for us, it's really important, is that we recognize that we're doing this as in a context of significant financial challenges, which you also hear about today as well through the reports. And what we have tried to do very much in adult social care is be very much stuck to our principles in which we have taken from the very outset, which is about openness, transparency and fairness and equality, and to ensure that we've taken this robust approach as we take forward. And you'll see through the range of reports today, there's been that robustness, but also that way in which we are trying at every single opportunity to go and look at how do we keep that focus on the best outcomes for people of the city, but within the financial envelope in which we have to work within, and also in the context of the bigger local and national challenges which are set out in the report. The report also sets out some of the key things and changes that we've been making, particularly around our leadership and operating model, which you'll hear more about in November committee. And one of the key things for me in coming to post is creating that operating model, which is about outcomes, but it's also sustainable for the future. And we'll hear more about that in November. And alongside that, how we are committed to valuing our social care workforce, which is also in the council's delivery plan, and which has been a key, you know, responsibility in going forward. And then finally, how we ensure we've got transparent performance reporting, which you'll hear more about from November onwards. So that's all I'm going to say, and hopefully this is a helpful, you know, overview. And as I say, this is the start of a number of reports to committee on our progress. So open for questions.
Thank you, Alexis. And I'm conscious that a lot of members have been using the, have been accessing these reports digitally, but now I've got paper copies, so they're just struggling to find it. It's in the second part of the thinnest report we should have in front of us. So that's thank you for that report, Alexis. And does anyone have any questions or comments on Alexis's report? Angela.
I just wanted to note my thanks and to the team for all the hard work. They've worked through the summer to, you know, to ensure that we hit targets and people have not taken holidays and worked very late. And I just want to note that.
Thank you, I definitely commend that. And councillor Milton.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not quite sure how to frame this question, but in view of the fact that there's yet another alarming story in the press today about funding to social care and the precarious position that local authorities find themselves in, it's, you know, it's not new news, it's just more of the same news that we've come to expect. And I just wonder where, where in the whole assurance framework system, especially as Alexis, you're talking about a new assurance framework, where in that framework is the mechanism for local authorities to say there isn't enough money?
I think it's a very good question. First of all, I just want to note my thanks to councillors Argentio and Lindas Hammond for their comments, just really appreciate it. We have, within the CQC assurance framework, there's a section which is on leadership and workforce and governance, which will look at the effective use of our resources, which is why we have the report today, which is going to be presented by Liam Duggan, which looks at our benchmark and our use of resources within adult social care, because that will ultimately be looked at as part of the assurance framework. What, and it sets a scene, you know, for us just to demonstrate that we are absolutely being diligent in the best value use of the funding that we do have. One of the key questions that will be, I think, presented is about the sufficiency of funding to social care to meet the current and future demands. And over the next few months, as we find out more about the income from fair cost of care exercises and the social care charging forms, and the greater, this will help us to understand what other incomes will be coming into adult social care to help to meet the increasing pressures that we have as a service. And for me, that's absolutely going to be a key question as part of the assurance frameworks, but also as part of our due diligence as a service as well.
A follow-up, yeah, sure.
May I just quickly come back, Chair, thank you on that. Just to say that recognizing locally that there are funding gaps is one thing, but just help me understand, who do we ask when, you know, we recognize a funding gap? And just to put this in really simple terms, we need to ask for more money to provide the things we statutorily need to provide and to keep people well and out of hospital. And who, where does the ask go and what happens to it?
So I believe that would be the Secretary of State. And what, I think what I will do, though, is do the due diligence, is to confirm where members would require to write to, to ask that question. And I will, you know, confirm that. And I will confirm that information for members so that you have that information.
Thank you, Angela, do you want to come?
Yeah, thank you, Ruth, for asking that question. We were just discussing exactly that just before the meeting started. So we are looking into it, because we cannot deny that the situation we find ourselves in is not just Sheffield, it's the whole country is facing the same crisis, and it comes from an underfunding of social care over at least the last 10 years, if not longer. And therefore, it's not just a local issue, it's a national issue. And we have discussed it in meetings, and we are looking at what, you know, we can do, especially now that we have a kind of a renewed cabinet, whether we should put something out there, but we're looking into it.
That's helpful, thanks, Angela. And Steve.
Yeah. I think there are a number of ways that we certainly together can, you know, lobby for better funding. I mean, there's been a lot of benchmarking gone into the reports, which shows how we are performing, if we get to the other reports, Chair, that shows how we locally are performing against other authorities. And some we are better, we're ahead of other authorities, and in some areas, we're not. But all that in the reports later on. And I think there's a lot of work going on at, well, certainly at officer level, certainly Alexis, in terms of working with other Directors of Adult Social Services. So, you know, I think we need to, you know, continue that, those routes in order to, and also discussions with health as well. I think there's a lot that can be done to make sure that we work in partnership better, in better partnership with health, to my mind, in order to ensure that any funding that is, that does come from central government is allocated fairly across the piece.
Abdaam.
Thank you, Chair. Just following on from councillor Ruth's question about the finances, the DAS's role in the report says it's also about improving preventative services. To what extent can we improve preventative services if there is such a strain on the budget, if we're focusing on the statutory elements of things? So how is the budget going to be shifted so that there is an improvement in prevention, rather than just the focus on statutory side?
Thank you for that. And it's a really good question, it's been core to me in coming to post is to also focus on the prevention, and I'm particularly tackling inequalities, because these are also duties upon that's in the Care Act as well. And one of the key things for me has been about is to set in motion a couple of big projects. So first of all, we have a project to look at developing an early help service for adult social care, and that's particularly focusing on how we support people at an earlier stage to live more independently. So that's one project that's currently underway and not becoming back to committee in the future with the outcomes of the results of that for approval. And that will also be linked into the target operating model report that we're bringing to committee in November. So that will set out from prevention right through to complexity and need, how we are supporting individuals. The second part is through working with partners across police and across with health colleagues, is to develop a multi-agency screening hub, particularly in terms of safeguarding. So we're working at an earlier stage to prevent abuse and harm, and reworking in a different way with partners to go and do that. And you'll hear a bit more about that today from Janet Cairn and from Tim Gollans, who are today presenting on the safeguarding report. And then third, what we're doing is also working with health colleagues to focus on, particularly in tackling inequalities, because for me, the question's often is not so much who's on my waiting list, but who's not on my waiting list? And that's always the question for me, is who's not accessing their services because they don't know or don't have the access to support or there are barriers through the way we work. So that's also part of the recommission exercises that we're undertaking. And today, you hear about the supported living framework we're undertaking, but also the mental health recommissioning. And part of these about is improving our offer very much at an earlier stage, so that we could hopefully help people to live more independently and well at an earlier stage and in the communities. And all the good research and due diligence would indicate, is if we're able to support people at an earlier stage, that means that we're not supporting people at a crisis point, which is where the pressures often come. And, you know, from a point of view of people's outcomes, when we are supporting people in crisis, that's when we actually, people have poorer outcomes. But ultimately, we actually conversely end up spending more money. So very much, you know, it's a very much prevention, prevention, as much as we can do in different ways. So hopefully that's helpful, and I could certainly give you more information out with the committee if that's helpful as well.
That's useful, thank you, Chair. And I think the question will come up in different agenda points as well, so I've got further questions on mental health, but we'll deal with those later. Thank you.
Thank you all. Are we seeing, I'm not seeing any more hands at the moment, so that all that remains really is for us to note the report if all agreed? I'm seeing dissent, so yes, that's noted. Thank you, Alexis, and I'll certainly hear from you again shortly. Right, now on to agenda item eight, which is the recommissioning of supported living, respite and day services. I think we've got Caroline's name against this report, or I don't know, there might be various reports here. So I know a number of items with slightly similar titles here, but this is the first of our recommissioning items today, so. And to be found as part of the main report pack for anyone looking for it. Hi, both. If you want, just want to introduce yourselves to the committee and then present your report, if that's okay. Thank you.
Good morning, all. I'm Caroline Swift, Commissioning Officer in the Commissioning Service.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Christine Anderson, Commissioning Manager.
The report that we're presenting today is to seek approval for recommissioning a range of services, which we're kind of badging as services to help people throughout the whole of their lives. So that's support within the home, which is supported living schemes at the moment, activities outside the home, which are day services, and also activities outside the home in terms of overnight breaks and respite care. What we're aiming to achieve through this reprocurement is, as I said earlier, we really want to support providers to encourage people to, to enable people to deliver all a person's outcomes throughout their life. That's what we're really aiming to do with the new commissioning arrangement.
Yeah, because the existing arrangements come to an end next March, we see this as an opportunity to look at an overarching working age framework. So as Caroline's mentioned, it's looking at the whole of somebody's life, rather than providers working in isolation and just working with an individual, say, in supported living, but then a different provider for the activities that they do outside of the home. We also see it as a real opportunity to have some flexibility to innovate as well, because we've got a longer contract term. And the proposal is that as well as the three lots for supported living activities outside the home and respite, that we look at an innovation lot, so that we can open and close that as in when we have a demand for further procurement over the contract term.
Yeah. Also, we are aiming to change the scope of the services slightly. We're hoping to broaden the scope to, because currently the supported living arrangements are very, quite focused on services for people with a learning disability, and we really want to broaden that scope so that providers can provide the services for people with a range of needs, so people with physical disabilities, sensory impairments, autism, spectrum disorders, as well as learning disabilities as well.
I think one of the other things that we wanted the committee to note, and I've had a conversation with councillor Lindas Hammond and councillor Argentio before, is the very valuable piece of engagement that we've been doing with Disability Sheffield and Health Watch since June, which is informing this reprocurement. And in previous years, we've done a one-off piece of engagement, which has perhaps just been a survey and some focus groups. But this is new for us, and it's an innovation, using creative means to hear people's voices, really, who otherwise haven't had a voice previously. It's called the Chance to Choose Project. People who've been involved in this project are also going to be involved in the evaluation of the tender People who've been involved in this project are also going to be involved in the evaluation of the tender submissions and then moving forwards. They'll be involved in quality monitoring the new providers. So it's just to draw everyone's attention to the initial report from Disability Sheffield and Health Watch, the Golden Threads Report, which we're very happy that, we feel that we've got, you know, a very robust engagement process in place that will continue to inform future strategy as well.
Yeah, definitely. Obviously, the report does reference the financial challenges that adult care is facing at the moment. And this reprocurement is an opportunity to relook at the pricing model for these services. And that is something that we will be taking forward throughout, through this process. We've done some consultation with providers in the wider region, some benchmarking with other authorities. So we are looking at all the different pricing options to strike that balance between making sure we've got a sustainable market of providers to offer that choice of provision, but also that we are mindful of the financial pressures that we're facing. The, just to follow on from Christine's point earlier, we are looking at a longer term contract for this arrangement. But we are going to be ensuring that we've got the flexibility through that contract to respond to any challenges that we may well face in the future. So that's going to be a key part of it as well.
Thank you for that. I've got initially one question from Abda Sam.
Thank you Chair. The question I have is in relation to the financial implications. So I think you said there at the end that you recognized that the budget pressures. So if the budget is staying the same, but the report recognizes that need is going to increase, how are we going to make sure that the safety and the quality of the care that's being requested isn't challenged, isn't put into sort of question? I look up sort of further on in the report where you say that you're going to address the budget measures by reviewing the rate. And I think you mentioned there about the pricing model, you'd look at how that would possibly change. So I think the question that I have is how do we make sure that the quality and, you know, the safety of what we're requiring for individuals isn't affected by an ever increasing budget?
Yes, thank you for that question councillor Hammond. We've looked at a range of measures and we feel confident that within the standstill budget that we can make some amendments that won't have an impact really on quality measures. For example, at the moment, we've got a range of geographical rates for supported living. And providers have told us that that isn't really manageable for them. So we can make some economies of scale by just reviewing what we call our discounted rate as well as just rationalizing the geographical rates. Which means that we've managed to look at the finances so that there's winners and no losers in terms of an hourly rate for providers, which I think is key to quality. Because what we want to ensure is that the providers can afford to recruit a high caliber of workforce and pay a decent living wage for the people that they're employing. The other thing that we've been able to look at is how we pay currently for night time support. And that, it's released an envelope of money for us to be able to, if you like, pass on to the other side of how we look at the hourly rate. Currently, we pay an hourly rate for night time support, but most of the local authorities still pay, have reverted, sorry, to paying a block payment, which again, we've done some quite robust financial modeling and we can do that comfortably. And we've consulted with the support providers, that they are comfortable with that as well. I think it's something that we definitely need to scrutinize very closely moving forward. We mustn't be complacent because, you know, this isn't a race to the bottom for us, you know. And we are very aware of the pressures that are on the providers to provide a high quality service within a very restrictive budget. But I think again, we're confident we've got a very good working relationship with all our providers. So it's something that we will be monitoring as a commissioning team throughout the term of the contract.
Can I just ask a follow up Chair very quickly? Do we turn people away then if there isn't the sufficiency there to be able to take on additional need because of the finances? So I'm reassured by what you said about quality and making sure that's maintained. But are we creating sort of a system where there's only a finite number of individuals that can be supported?
What we do currently is that we'd always look on an ad hoc basis at individuals where the needs are in excess of perhaps the norm. And that's, you know, how we'd continue to work. So I'm looking at Alexis nodding, we've never turned anyone away, so I don't think that's the risk. Obviously, we'd always negotiate and look at value for money as well. So yes, it's always a case of meeting people's social needs first and foremost, but with the mind's eye to value for money as well.
Thank you. Can I go to Steve now please?
Yeah, I just wonder whether you could just enlarge upon how the contract would be monitored on, you had to tell it conforms with the framework.
And we've currently got a quality and performance team within commissioning who will continue to be the leads on monitoring the contracts. But going back to what Caroline and I were mentioning about, we've got an opportunity with the Chance to Choose project to actually have experts by experience to lead on some of this quality monitoring as well. So it's really almost like a 360 degree picture of monitoring quality. We also quite often work with our colleagues from health as well and get feedback from them. So we're not just looking at one measure of quality, if you like. We're also writing into our new specification more emphasis on trusting the providers as trusted reviewers. They all without exception have very robust quality monitoring mechanisms in place and which we respect and will refer to as well. But I think first and foremost, I think what we've learnt over the last four, five months is that how powerful it is to hear people's voice as well in terms of measuring quality and what's working for them and not working for them from themselves and from their families and advocates.
Okay, thank you. Go to Ruth now please.
Thank you Chair. I'm just really pleased to read some of the background information that you've given. At 2.5 in the report, for example, about community and day activities. And you've identified several drivers for change. So individuals can achieve personal development, social inclusion and wellbeing outcomes. I'm just wondering if you've got any sort of worked examples of that? Or is this purely looking into the future of the recommissioned service? Or have you got sort of case examples that you could share with us as to how that has worked really well?
And I think it's about what we're aiming to achieve with the new ways of working. I believe we're hoping to have Disability Sheffield come and tell the committee more about the Chance to Choose project. So I think that might be quite powerful if we ask for some case studies to be presented as part of that presentation, if that makes sense. I think it's about making sure that we've got the new ways of, the new commissioning arrangement, sorry, are about making sure that we've got the right services across the city so that people have choice. So it's not necessarily about, you know, person X goes to such a place and does the activities there. It's about making sure that person X has got the choice to maybe do something different with their day. And it's just trying to make sure that we've got the right balance of services there. But I think in terms of specific case studies, as Christine has mentioned, I think it'd be really powerful to hear that from the individuals themselves. So if we could try and work that into a future committee meeting, I think that would be really, really useful.
If I can just add just a lived example from an engagement session that I went to yesterday, talking to a woman who lives in a supported living scheme, who one of the days in the week, she goes to a traditional day service provider and she was quite vocal about how she doesn't like going there. But two days of the week, she lives very near a St Luke's Hospice charity shop. And she was just so enthusiastic about how she loves it there, she feels valued. One of the volunteers there supports her and has obviously taken her under a wing. But she said, I feel part of the team. And I think for me, that's a really good example of, you know, what we want to see in the future, that the supported living provider is supporting that person, to see what's out in the local community, the shop's literally at the end of the street. So she's engaging with the neighbours who are also volunteers, rather than travelling in a bus the other side of the city to sit in a day service where she's not enjoying what she's doing. Apart from the fact that it's costing adult social care a considerable amount of money for her to do that as well. So they're the sorts of examples, but as Caroline said, Disability Sheffield will be able to present far more and come back to committee with those stories of difference.
Thank you. Do you want to come up Ruth?
I had another question if that's all right Chair. Thank you, yeah. I just wondered whether you could elaborate just a little bit about the impact of integration now that we're in the new integrated care system? And how any of the new approach to integrating health and care might have filtered through to what you're doing?
Yes, we have a good working relationship with our colleagues in health. And actually, we have a member of our team who in commissioning who works across the ICB and adult social care, which is invaluable. Obviously, we've been collaborating with them in drawing up the specification for this working age framework. And moving forward, there's a number of ways where we work side by side with them, which will continue. For example, the leader committee, the Physical Health Implementation Group. We work with colleagues on the Autism Partnership Board and the Learn Disability Partnership Board. I think because we've strengthened our relationship with Health Watch as well during the consultation, that's going to be key as well for the future of the working age framework.
Thank you. Any more questions? I've just got one really, it's about the bringing in of the activities outside the home into this contract. Obviously, I appreciate by definition it's the things that are, you know, not within the home. But is there, to your knowledge of the current cohort, much if any of a crossover in terms of people that are within, that are in the supported living cohort, also receiving day services? Is there a significant crossover there? You know, do we know what kind of, but is it a very high percentage of the people that currently receive day services commissioned by the council that are in supported living? I'm just thinking through in terms of, you know, in the medium to long term, what kind of, you know, what kind of shape of development this might take. Because clearly there is a large crossover and now they're being commissioned together, there might be some, you know, development that could happen.
I don't know the figure exactly, but you're right, it's a significant portion of people that accessed current day services do live in supported living services. And I think that's one of the key things around bringing these services together is we want to make sure that all the different services are focused on the individual. So for example, we've talked about person X going to place Y for a certain length of time. It's whether that's really what that person wants or whether there's a slightly different way of that person meeting the outcomes. The example Christine gave earlier of the person going to volunteer in the local community, for example. I think that's one of the things that we want to really try and bring together by bringing all these services in under one commissioning arrangement. So yes, you're right, there's a significant group of people there to focus on. On trialling these new ways of working alongside obviously the teams in assessment and care management. So yeah.
I think by calling it activities outside the home, you wanted to get away from the concept of day services. You know, it's an activity rather than a service and it should be in the evenings and weekends as well. So that people start developing those links within the community rather than going to a paid for service. I think just to finally add as well, it was interesting during Covid that a lot of the supported living providers really stepped up to the mark and organized a lot of activities at home or within the sort of smaller local community. And people did vote with their feet afterwards and said they didn't want to go five days a week to a day service anymore. So we want to build on that as well.
Thanks. That's really interesting. Not seeing any more hands, so all remains. Thank you for that. And turn to the recommendations that we have today. We've just got two recommendations, both to approve the commissioning set out here and also note and endorse the market position statement, which is here as well. So I think in dissent to those, no, so I think we can say that that is agreed. And thank you both very much for that and your teams. Now, moving on, we've got item 10, we've got the older person prevention service. We've got someone here for that item. We've got Jo, great. Are you ready?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm here to present a proposal with regards to the council's commissioned prevention service for people who are aged 55 or more. And it's a service that we've had in place since September 2017. The service operates across the city, providing short term support, usually six to nine months, to people who are, as I say, aged 55 or more and have perhaps experienced a deterioration in their health condition. The support is usually under two, three hours a week, but there is flexibility. It's a very flexible, person centred service. It's not a personal care service, but actually we're very clear that some of the outcomes of this service are to reduce the need for personal care by increasing people's independence and confidence. They also support with safe and timely discharge from hospital, building confidence, maximizing income, which is obviously a really, a really key part of their work in the current financial climate. Making the home environment safe really and supporting with advice about aids and adaptations and helping people connect with their local communities. So really supporting people who perhaps have got a bit of a, have had a bit of a deterioration in their physical or mental health, who just need a little bit of support each week for a short period of time to get them, get them sort of back on their feet and feeling confident again. We have undertaken a review of the service and it is consistently full and achieving really good outcomes. The number of people that the service sees each year has slightly reduced and that is as a result of the increasing needs of the people referred into that service. So that means slightly more time spent with people, slightly more complex needs than at the start of the contract period. It's important to note that there are two strategic reviews currently ongoing, including the early help review. And, you know, this is, the prevention service for over 55s is part of the scope of that review. And we are also looking at developing new services in this area, both in terms of our operating model in adult social care and also the wellbeing service that came to this committee back in June. Given that context, the proposal for this service, and given the positive impact and outcomes that it delivers, this proposal is simply to extend the current service offer by 12 months in order to enable us to complete those strategic reviews. in order to enable us to complete those strategic reviews of provision, including this and other types of prevent, reduce, delay activity, and to ensure that we are making an informed, commissioning-informed decision about the future of this and other prevention-related services. Given the short nature of that extension period and the success of the current service, it's proposed that it is likely that a short period of contract extension would be the optimal way to secure ongoing continuity of service for 12 months. So that's the recommendation of this paper, is to, that the committee approve the commission of an extension to the existing arrangements for prevention services for people aged 55 plus by 12 months, in line with this report whilst the review of early intervention and the operating model is taking place. And I'm really happy to take questions.
Thank you for going through that. Jo, do we have any questions? No, I think the report is relatively straightforward. So just turning to the recommendations, do we have any dissent from those? No? Are we happy to agree this? Yes, okay, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jo. Right, now we are turning to item 11, which is safeguarding. You've got Tim for this one, is it? Yes, great. Sorry, and Jan, hiya.
Hello, committee. Hello, committee. My name is Tim Gollings, Assistant Director for Safeguarding Mental Health. I'm here because I deal with operational safeguarding issues. Janet is our lead for, with the Safeguarding Adults Board, so she's here to discuss any aspects relating to that. The paper in front of you is, leads on from the strategy which was agreed by committee on, in June, June 15th. And in that strategy, there was a commitment to developing our safeguarding provision with a particular reference to people who have care and support needs. They are at risk of abuse and neglect, and they're unable to resolve those challenges for themselves. So this paper sets out how we're going to address those challenges. The recommendations are to approve the delivery plan, to agree to six monthly updates on progress, to allow the Alexis to refresh the strategy every six months, and to endorse the Safeguarding Adults Board report. Essentially, there's some key themes that run through the papers. The first is making safeguarding personal, and that's an approach to safeguarding which says, first of all, it's everybody's business. But particularly, the adult social care department has a responsibility to work with those vulnerable people. Essentially, it's making safeguarding personal is a practice approach that says it's important to listen to what people are saying and work with them on their particular outcomes that they want from safeguarding episode. The second theme is about a strength-based approach, and that says, really, again, a way of working with staff that says you need to develop people's skills, you need to work with individuals to develop relationships with their family members, and you need to try and connect people to the local community. And those are the ways you try and resolve safeguarding episodes. There's some key elements, key activities throughout the reports. The first one is that we're developing a multi-agency safeguarding hub with a range of partners, police, mental health, housing, voluntary community sector, and health partners, and our community colleagues. And the purpose of that is to develop a much more intense screening process so that the adult social care department can manage referrals to it better. The second key aspect of our work is developing our target operating model, which is a restructuring of how our teams operate so that we're focusing on key specialisms, rather than having workers being very generic. And we think that will help staff have a greater focus on safeguarding activity and have more time to do that personalised approach. We're also deepening our approach to transitions and young people, and we're obviously preparing for liberty protection safeguards that we expect to come in 2024. That's a partnership approach across the city. Now, of course, some key performance issues that we're addressing. We have done quite well since last year. We've improved, developed our positive outcomes 20% from last year. We've increased satisfaction levels, although I have to say slightly marginally, but they have got better overall satisfaction levels. We've reduced contacts, and we've reduced formal inquiries. Only 21% of inquiries go onto a formal inquiry now. And we've overall reduced waiting times. We do have some particular performance challenges, however. We do have a month waiting list for dealing with our first contacts, resolving those safeguarding issues. Although I should say that 80% of every contact is resolved within 24 hours, and the remaining 20% within 48. But there are those longer-term investigations that do take some time. So I think with that, that's a key summary of the elements of the report. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Tim. I've just got one hand from Abtam.
Thank you, thank you for the report. It's more a comment than a question, and that's in relation to deprivation of liberty. I recently came across an individual who was going through the process of the authority, possibly going through the process of deprivation of liberty. And I was struck by how little they knew of the process, but also how our staff struggled to explain the legalities of the process. And it's a really complex area of law, and, you know, for the ordinary layperson, they'd struggle to understand why something like that would be imposed on an individual, but for the wider family as well to understand the complexities there. So I think, for me, that there's an element of, to what extent are our staff being trained to understand, to relay that information to communities, to individuals and to families, who will be struggling and going through a number of pressures? And, you know, when safeguarding concerns arise, it's not an easy area to understand. And for a lot of families, well, this particular family that I was supporting, even when the social worker tried her very best to explain, the family still struggled to understand what it meant for them, and what it meant for their child who was just turned over the age of 18. So it's a really complex area, but I feel that we could do a lot better in terms of understanding, not us understanding, but relaying that information to communities in a more friendly and approachable way that allows them to understand what it really means and what it means for the individual concerned. Because for a lot of people in this particular family that I was supporting, it just felt to them as though their child was going to be taken away from them, and that have a, you know, there'd be some, the court order that supports this. So I think there's more to be done in terms of the information that we have, and being able to relay that in a person-friendly way to individuals. So I don't think we're there yet. And I sat in on a meeting with the family and the social worker. I'm a lawyer, and I really still struggle to understand how the individual was explaining to the parents what it meant for them. And I think they struggled a little bit with it as well, and that's why they struggled to give that information appropriately.
Yes, I mean, I cannot tend to agree with you on many of your comments. We know we've got an issue with, well, not LPS, but does, deprivation of liberty work at the moment? It is a complex area of work, and I think we don't, we've tended to specialise the teams in the DOLs world. And I don't think our general workforce knows enough about deprivation of liberty. And with the introduction of LPS, we've really got an opportunity to develop the general workforce's understanding of depredations and how they need to explain better to families. We've also got a development of our new information advice and guidance website, which will help with that. I think we've had quite a relatively weak offer to the citizen, if you like, that explains adult social care, and we are developing that over the next year. I think there'll be a paper to this committee late in September about that. And we've got a practice development programme that's focused around the introduction of LPS that will train the staff better to deal with deprivation of liberty in the field. So I accept what you're saying and acknowledge some of the issues you've got.
I think the other thing I'd say is the majority of situations in which we deal with deprivation of liberty is at the other end of the age range. So I do wonder, is some of that about a lack of experience of someone, a worker dealing with a younger person in a different context? The majority of situations we deal with deprivation of liberty are people who end up in care, older people in care who don't have capacity. And this situation sounds like it was probably outside of the mainstream. I don't say that to make any excuse for, but I'd be interested to talk a bit further about it and understand some of the detail. Because if it's something, one of my bits of my new role is around practice development, and if there is some stuff there that we can assist with, some case examples, some understanding we can give to people, that would be really helpful. Because it sounds to me like that's around a transitions area we're talking. And I think that becomes really difficult, because you end up in that situation where parents struggle with understanding how, just because the young person is in that. I mean, I've got a son who's 24, he's still my child, and I still think I should be able to tell him what to do. But there's that difference, isn't there, between as people move across that boundary between an adult and a child, which I think maybe does cause some confusion? So it would be interesting to explore that a bit further and see if there's something that we can add into. Because we'll do very standard deprivation of liberty training and mental capacity assessment, et cetera. But I think this sounds like it's an area that's a bit more difficult, and actually, we might need to give our staff some help on.
Thank you. It was transition, and I agree that that area does seem to be missed out, so happy to help in any way.
Yeah, and that would be useful.
Thanks, and that's, Andrew, you've got a question, thanks.
Yes, again, a comment. Thank you very much for the report, and it's been really interesting to attend the last two, like, meetings of the safeguarding team with external, you know, with all the partners. So I think it's very good news that we have this and that we will have an overarching kind of delivery plan. I think, as I've said in meeting, the proof is in the pudding, and it's about how we operationalise it and how we actually look at possible weaknesses and risks. And I think one of our risks as a big organisation, as any big organisation, is communication. And it's always, it's communication with people, so the kind of information that we give families and individuals. So I know that at corporate level, we are looking at how we write the letters and how clear the letters that we send from wherever, when it's, like, it's got Sheffield City Council, and how friendly they are to the layperson. But also, it's about how we communicate with partners and also within departments in the council so that we don't make, like, big errors, because we always have those crises when there's been some kind of gap. So it's just something that we need to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and I think that is one of the places that the MASH will have a really positive impact. Because a lot of the safeguarding that comes through our front door isn't safeguarding at all. People don't send it to be difficult, but in their head, it's safeguarding, but it isn't what we would deal with as safeguarding. But if I give you a very practical example of how we expect the MASH to work, is we can imagine having twice-daily huddles, so we have a group of people ourselves, the police, health colleagues, meet maybe in the morning, in the afternoon, and things that are coming through the door, we can quickly gather the information to say, actually, that's not, but we need to do an assessment for that person. Actually, this probably needs to go to that organisation over there. Whereas at the moment, there's a lot of work goes into that, because you might be trying to contact someone in the police, it might be three or four days before they come back to you. So, and the other thing for me that's really important in that is the more we're discussing with our colleagues and partners, the more they understand what our role is there. But I think you're absolutely right, it's a lot about communication and how we do that amongst ourselves, with the people we work with. But there's also the other big issue that we get criticised quite a lot. An organisation might today send us in a safeguarding referral. We might deal with it, we might deal with it absolutely properly, but what we might not do is get back to people and explain what's happened. And again, that's where I think the MASH will help, that we need to, because it's twofold. One, it's polite to tell people what you've done about something they've asked you to do. But the second bit is that it's learning. So if people send us something, we say, well, actually, no, what you're better thing to do with that is send it to those people over there, then we won't get it back again. So I think there's a lot of work to do around that communication, but I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. I'm not seeing your questions. I've just got a couple of comments and questions myself. And it probably does kind of come on from managers quite well, actually. In, I was just trying to work in my mind where the MASH sits in the system. So from what you're saying, am I right in thinking it kind of sits after the kind of initial phone call or however the initial referral comes in, but before, in the current or the past system, you would get into that, you know, whatever actions you were doing to take?
It basically sits in first contact, and it'd be really part of the screening. So whereas now, it might be one of our staff sitting, looking and saying, do we, what direction do we put this? It will go to a multi-agency group of people who will make that decision. And instead of one person having to make a phone call here, a phone call here, and gathering information, hopefully, we'll be able to gather the information there and then in order to make the decision it goes this way or that way.
That's helpful. And I think, just a comment, it's purely anecdotal, really, but I think, you see, you know, busy fellow professionals who aren't directly involved in safeguarding, particularly perhaps in the health, but I'm sure there's many examples in the council as well, who want to make safeguarding referrals because they want to protect people and they want to help sort out a difficult situation. But there, as I say, it's purely anecdotal, sometimes there appears to be a lack of clarity from those people on why they're making that referral. They know that because they want to protect somebody, they want to do right by somebody. But I think I was just watching on television, and someone said, I'll put a safeguarding referral in there. It was some kind of, you know, health-focused programme.
Be an ambulance person, usually.
Exactly. And I just thought, gosh, they are treating us in a positive way. They are referring it on to somebody, and they will sort that person's life out, hopefully. But actually, we know that resources and the system that we're working in is so tight that we need to make sure those things are right. So I do really welcome, you know, further work to inform people about how, you know, where they are best to take things. I've got a question, I think, Tim, you mentioned, and there's stuff in the report around kind of stats, I guess, the kind of the facts. And I think you said, Tim, sorry, I can't remember which way it was, about, you know, welcoming that there was, some of the numbers had dropped in terms of referrals. How can we ever be sure in an area like this, which way the numbers are going is a good thing? And how do we assess that? Because I appreciate that if you see numbers dropping, it's not as easy to assess the positive and negative of that as it might be for some other things. And so how can we confidently understand which numbers we want to be moving in which direction as a result of the changes and things we're making?
Okay, well, we have a performance dashboard, which is quite clear about which numbers we want to go down and which numbers we want to go up. We can provide more information about those, should you require it. Essentially, we want, there's a difference between wellbeing and safeguarding, I guess. And it's relevant to your last point as well, actually. The council and our partners are responsible for citizens' wellbeing, but adult social care is responsible for safeguarding vulnerable people. And I suppose we want the first figure, the number of people we want who are getting general help and support with their wellbeing to go up, but we want the number of people who are coming to adult social care to have a safeguarding episode dealt with going down. And I suppose we need to make sure that we explain those statistics well enough for you. So I'm happy to, you know, come back with further information about, you know, the details of the statistics.
That might be helpful. I mean, it is quite possibly much my reading of it, but it wasn't always clear to me, but it might possibly be my reading of the statistics.
I think it's difficult because... I think it's difficult because people sometimes contact us via a safeguarding route because they want to tell us something. And I think that's the bit we need to clarify. It's stuff potentially we need to know, but it isn't safeguarding with a big S. I mean, I suppose, as we were just talking, it makes me think, I wouldn't want to work with an organisation whose ambition was to have no complaints. It's the same thing, you need, you know, you need that stuff coming in. But I think where we've got to educate people is not to tell us things, it's to tell us things in a different way. And I think that's about us being clearer about which route people come in. Because sometimes people will say, well, I have to put it in a safeguarding because that's the only way you'll receive it. And also they think we'll take it more seriously, but actually sometimes the opposite happens because we look and we say, well, that's not safeguarding, it's over there. Whereas they said, we need this person to have an assessment, then we would deal with that. But again, I'm maybe being overly ambitious for the MASH, but I think the MASH will sort a lot of these issues out.
That's good to hear and thank you both for that. I'm not seeing any more questions, I don't think I've missed anything. So all remains is for us, thank you, and turn to the four recommendations that we have. Are we all agreed with those and sent to those four recommendations? I think we're seeing agreement here. So it's agreed. Thank you. And now, we're going to turn to item 13. We've got the market shaping statement, market sustainability and oversight plan and fair cost of care exercise. And we've got Catherine to present here today. So welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Hi, yeah, I'm Catherine Bunton. I'm the interim assistant director for commissioning in adult social care. Thank you for your time today. The report asks for approval of a market shaping statement, which includes our market position statement. A lot of work has gone into this across the team and it's based on the adult social care strategy, living the life you want to live, and sets out some of our high level intentions and our direction of travel and what we want from the market. We're also asking committee to note the progress made in our fair cost of care exercise, noting that there's further work to be done to that with final submissions in February next year. And finally, the report contains our market sustainability delivery plan. That's critical, we can't have a good market position statement, we can't have good care for people of Sheffield if we don't have a sustainable market. And that appendix sets out how we're going to move towards that, how we're going to make sure we understand the risks facing the market now, that what the future changes might mean in terms of the impact for different markets and what we intend to do to improve sustainability together with providers and together with communities in Sheffield. I think it's important as well to note that the market position statement is a starting point, it's a dynamic document and it's a process. What we want to do, if we get approval today, is use that to do further engagement to make sure that we've got the information and the expertise from our providers feeding into what we want to do and what we want to achieve in Sheffield for the people using our services. Yeah, and to make sure particularly that we look at the risks that our providers are facing in terms of their sustainability, fully understanding those and what we can do about them. The next steps are focused on that engagement. We've got a series of events over the autumn and the winter to do that and also to develop more detailed market position statements because every individual market has its own challenges and its own response. We want to be able to do those and do them justice without making a document that's too complicated for people to be able to engage with. And I'm very happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Abda Sam.
Thank you, Chair. I struggled with this one a little bit. So I struggle to understand who decides where in the market we sit, whether it's the median, the higher end of the quartiles in terms of where the costings will sit. If we decide it's towards the higher end, where does that additional money come from? If there's no additional money, do we go back to providers and say, there's no additional money, we're going to sit with what we've got? And then in terms of profit and reasonable profit, who decides what or who defines what reasonable profit is? And in the current landscape of, you know, of where we sit with everything, you know, is it the right time to be looking at increasing the level of profit? And where does that sit with looking at how much staff are paid and making sure that we've got the right quality of care in terms of the standard of staffing, highly qualified staff there? Are we having those discussions with providers as well? And then finally, in terms of the ethical procurement policy, to what extent, when we are going out to the market, are we ensuring that there's an element of social value and that that is one of the key emphasising points, one of the key factors for deciding market factors and market values? Do we ensure that we look at providers that come from Sheffield on the whole and do we support them to develop and, yeah, a sort of a better position within the market? So, yeah, I struggle to see where this would go if we're, on the one hand, saying that we're struggling financially and then, on the other hand, we're saying that we might look to increase the level of money or reasonable profits that we're giving providers?
Thank you. They're very good questions. I think it's fair and right to say that financial stability is one of the key concerns of providers, not just in Sheffield, across the country. And that rates of, the rates that we pay is part of that, but actually also it's about how big the market is, how saturated it is. And one of the things that we have to do as commissioners is shape that market to make sure that we've got the right balance of choice, but that there's not so much that providers are trying to manage high rates of, high vacancy rates or low occupancy rates and trying to deal with that. The workforce and staffing issue is really key. We're doing a lot of work at the moment with our home care providers to make sure that the benefits of different ways of offering contracts are passed on to the workforce and they get, then they can share in our workforce development, in our training, that they've got the skills and really importantly, the values that we want to work with people in Sheffield and that they're getting fair rates of pay. So we do have to consider that. Going back to your point about deciding about the lower median or higher quartiles, that has to come out in our commissioning strategies, which might differ in terms of how we address it in domiciliary care and how we address it in care homes. There's nothing set out that we have to have a single rate for all care homes, for example. We might be able, we might be able to set out different rates either for different types of care or different levels of provision. What the fair cost of care exercise asks us to submit is just that information, what the lower quartile is, what the median is, what the upper quartile is, and a report that sort of describes how we engage with providers to get that information, how we've validated it, how we've got confidence in it, and then what we will do to move towards it. Some of that money will come in our settlement, we don't know that yet, which is why we have until February to submit our final market sustainability plan, because you can't do all your planning unless you know the financial envelope that you've got to do that planning with. But I think that other mechanisms that we have at our disposal, firstly, I think it's really important that we build a relationship with providers, we make sure that they feel that they've contributed to what we're saying in terms of the risks and how realistic anything that we would do to address them is. Oh, I've lost my train of thought. What do we need to do? We need, that our contracting, the contracting that we've got available to us. So we've talked a bit about having longer term contracts, that gives providers a bit of stability and knowing where they're going, different payment mechanisms that we can use so that they can plan, and building partnerships and forums so that people can share their learning. You made a point about reasonable profit. I think we will look at the different profit rates that are coming in. The average from, it's important to say that our information is still being validated, but we've got a range of profits coming in from our providers at the moment and care homes seem to be averaging at around 15% and home care providers at about 5%. We need to look at how that spreads and what that means for our market and then what we recommend. And that would be coming back to committee in February around the same time as the final market sustainability plan. Social value, sorry, I made a little note of everything. Social value goes into all our commissioning contracts and I would perhaps suggest that rather than focusing on where the providers are, we look to make sure that those providers will invest in Sheffield, that we can see the value not only for adult social care outcomes, but for wider council priorities in terms of what those providers bring to the borough. And, yeah, the social value tends to be covered in our method statements so that we can track and track any impact and track that providers are delivering against what they would say they would in their tender submissions. I think, I hope I've covered the points that you made. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm seeing any more questions at the moment. Ruth.
Is that still working? Yeah, apologies if this is misplaced, but I see a reference to the Unison Ethical Care Charter. I think I've lost it again now in the report, but the council's also signed up to the GMB Ethical Care Charter and I wonder whether that reference to that has been made in the report as well. Apologies, Chair, if that's a misplaced question for this particular report, but I felt it was relevant.
I'm not sure where that is, but I think we would make sure that we were signed up to all relevant charters, so if that's not in there, apologies and we'll rectify that in the, as we develop the next version.
Thanks. Stephen then, Martin.
Yeah, I've got a question about how, I mean, it lays out the national context, the local context, I'm just wondering to what degree, what work has been done to look at the regional context as well? Given that, you know, in terms of, you know, attracting, you know, looking at employees of individual providers, there's a bit of mismatch across the region and that's a lot to do with what providers pay their carers. I'm just wondering how that, you know, what work has been done in developing this?
Yeah, thank you. That doesn't come out, but you're right. And it's really important that we work regionally and there are, we do work with colleagues across the region, not just in making sure that we are being fair and consistent and providers get a clear message, but also, of course, people don't live in postcode boundaries, do they? And we have to make sure that regionally there's high quality of care and that people in Sheffield who live on borders, for example, who are exercising choice, want to use different providers, we're confident that they're getting the care that they need and that we would want. So those conversations are happening with other commissioners and we're sharing information and we're trying to align our commissioning plans and our strategies.
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the report and for all of the reports so far and those that come. Really appreciate all the work that has been done on this. I just wanted to follow on from Councilman Hammond's question on reasonable profit, which I thought was a really good question. 15% for home care providers seems quite high to me, just from like a layman's point of view. So does this include, how's that kind of reported as 15%? Is that just money over, I guess, what's being spent? Or I'm just wondering if that includes money that's going to be put aside for like maintenance and stuff, or if this is purely just profit? Because 15% sounds quite high to me.
There is, well, of course, there's a range, if that's an average. That's silly thing for me to say. So how the, the cost of care exercise asks providers to return information against different categories, it includes staffing costs, running costs, maintenance costs. And it is a spreadsheet, basically, which then comes back in a database and it's, we work with Langbeeson who are validating that for us. And there's a line there where providers are able to put in their profit margins. It's simple and complicated at the same time, the spreadsheet.
We're going to go back on that, Martin.
Not particularly. I guess I was wondering if maintenance costs wasn't really included, but it sounds like they are, so 15% does seem quite high to me.
That's fine. Ruth?
May I just chip in on this one as well? I thought it was an extremely pertinent question raised by Abda Sam and thank you, Martin, for picking it up again. I mean, is profit only set by the providers or do we have some interaction in this, some deal making in this? And if so, have we exercised that before and what scope is there? Because, I mean, this committee is tasked with finding a hell of a lot of savings and it does seem a bit of an anomaly, really, that the providers who are engaged by us would not be part of that process.
Yeah, so we are able to input into what we think is a fair cost of care and a reasonable profit. The first exercise is just collecting the information from providers about what it is costing them in their business models to deliver the care. And then we validate that and we feed into that the wider context, including what we think is reasonable for the people of Sheffield for providers to have as a profit margin. And that's the work that comes in between now when we've got that data and the final sustainability report in February.
So just to be really clear, are we intending to ask our commissioned providers and prospective providers to participate in the cost saving exercise that this committee and council are committed to?
We have to make sure that the market's sustainable and we have to make sure that the rate that we're paying allows the market to be sustainable, as well as the other things that I was talking about. What we will do is bring a plan that can be delivered by the council financially as well as allows providers to deliver a high quality cost of care. I know that that probably isn't the direct yes or no, but we can't artificially deflate what we pay. And so it's not, I'm answering a slightly different question, I think, but acknowledging that we won't be bringing something that the council can't afford.
Thanks, I really appreciate you answering that, thank you. And it's not an unexpected question.
Thank you. Bring Abda Sam back, please.
Thank you. It's just to clarify that last point that Ruth made. So in terms of it coming back to this committee, if you bring back something that says, we would suggest that the profit margin should be 10% or 15%, does the committee get a decision on whether we would agree with that or would that be something that would already be decided? So do we, do we as a committee get to approve whether we think that may be too high?
The committee would approve the market sustainability plan, which would include what we're recommending as the profit margin amongst other things. I think you have that ability to approve the entire thing.
Yeah, shall we bring Alex in who, but what I would just say is obviously it depends how things are written, but we have to approve of the document whether or not, you know, Alex might be a bit clear about how, what form that will come in.
From afar. We got, just to answer the question in terms of the governance process, there is two things that we have to think about today is the market shaping statement, which is a legal requirement for us to have in terms of, to set our direction for the, what we're asked of providers in going ahead is. But secondly, in terms of the fair cost of care exercise, in terms of the governance of the process, which is essentially the ask of committee members is what, over the next, over October and November time, what's intended to do is undertake a set of dedicated briefings around the fair cost of care exercise with members to answer some of the questions that you've got, but also to go through the outcomes of the exercise of the fair cost of care exercise with members. Because I think there'll be a whole range of questions that will come from that. And then finally, then to bring to December committee for approval, the outcomes of the fair cost of care exercise and the market sustainability plan for approval by committee, because it's a member's decision. Before that's then submitted to the Department of Health and of Health and Social Care. And during the briefing sessions before that and also at committee is what we'll be setting out within that, is exactly within the regulations, is, is what members will be willing to sign up to in terms of the kind of key questions that you've asked today, in terms of both profit margins, but also in terms of what's adequacy in terms of, of adult social care provision going ahead. And one of the key things from our perspective is that we have to balance the sustainability of the market, but we've also got to ensure that, as Catherine could have highlighted earlier on, is if we are providing, say for additional funding, that that is also going directly to care staff in the city, so that, so that care staff are also getting a good wage, and, and that's what we want to see, and also that the providers are also showing social value and invested in Sheffield. And I would ask, as being very clear about that, in our current recommission exercises that we've been ongoing just now, that you heard about through the recommissioning of support living services as much as the recommission of our care and wellbeing services, we've been really clear about our ask of providers about sustainability to our workforce, but also clear about, about how we want to work in partnership with providers and recognizing the challenges that we have got that faces us today. So, 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 so we've been clear about that in our messages so far, and what, what we're trying to do is to, to balance what is the ask of UK government in terms of this exercise with is what is the rights of members to make decisions ultimately, you know, which is what, what's, what's basically the ask. And I think that's the, the key, what we are trying to do, so in terms of a governance process, essentially we're looking at, you know, briefing throughout November and October, November with the outcomes of the exercise, so that we'd hear all the information and the outcomes of the data that's been kind of validated, but very much the decision-making, which is essentially as you're asked, will be a member's decision-making for approval before at December committee, so that ultimately you make a decision as to what we can then submit to the Department of Health and Social Care in February. Does, does that make sense? And that's it, so hopefully that assures also members as well, because I absolutely understand the context behind your questions, and out with this committee, we could also provide some further reassurances, which might be also helpful in the briefing sessions.
Thanks Alexis, and I hope that answered me, what I would say is, yeah, I think clear to me is that, given this high level member interest in this topic, that we ought to, you know, definitely, we talked about briefing on, you know, the budget issues, but this is, like everything, it's partly a budget issue, isn't it? But we ought to, you know, have some private briefing for, for members so they can have the appropriate influence they need to ensure the report is in the form that members want it to be, so let's make sure we can, can do that. I'm not seeing any more questions from the floor. I just had a question myself, and again, it's probably not, again, not an easy one to answer, but when we, you know, are drawing up market shaping statements, whether that's in for, you know, either care home providers or for sort of home care or number of forms care, is it hard to provide something useful either in a written document or as a basis for our discussions and engagement with the sector, which is equally useful for a national provider who is looking to market shaping statements about how they might target their resources or how they might look to bid contracts in a number of areas and, and looking at Sheffield in that way? In, is it not quite different to the way it might be taken by a local provider, other than a care home provider or a local, a home care provider, who is essentially working hard doing a job with, you know, keeping the lights on in, in their city or keeping their staff going with, with that list of clients? To what extent can, can a local provider like that, you know, be influenced or, or change what they're doing, the market shaping statement? Is it, is it not more clear that national providers with wider sets of resources can respond more easily to a document like this?
I don't think that that necessarily has to be true and we would not want that. What we'd want is diversity in the market, both in terms of the type of care that's provided, but also in terms of the organisation that is providing it, and a more healthy market might include national providers, bigger providers, who have their own strengths and weaknesses, and local providers and sole traders who have different strengths and weaknesses, and we would need them both to have a successful and strong market. And I think that the market position statement is designed more to explain what we want for the people of Sheffield, and then there would be other discussions in other forums where we worked with different providers to help them respond and work out what they might need to do to respond and what we might need to do as commissioners to ensure we get that diversity.
Thank you, thank you, that, that's helpful. Any more points for Catherine today? If not, I'll just take us to the recommendations and unless there's any dissent, I'm saying, I say they're agreed. Thank you everybody, thank Catherine, thank you for today. Right, okay, moving on, we've got the Adults with Care Charging Plan, it looks like Liam is coming forward to present on this one. Hi Liam, you might see a little bit more of you in the next few minutes.
Thank you Chair, morning everyone. And so Charles Crowe is the author and architect of this report, unfortunately he's not very well today, so I shall be leading you through it. Yes, my name's Liam Duggan, I'm Assistant Director for Care Governance and Financial Inclusion in the Adult Service. The purpose of the report today is to introduce a significant national legislative change for adult social care and our preparations for it. The Health and Social Care Act 2022 has introduced a range of changes to the rules around the funding regime for adult social care. The changes are to be implemented in October next year, twelve months from now, but with assessments of individuals affected beginning from April next year in order to avoid a backlog, a potential backlog of reviews in the run-up to its implementation. The paper sets out a delivery plan for the smooth implementation of these significant reforms, and we're seeking approval to recruit additional staff to manage the change and to provide the additional capacity needed as a result of the change, plus a small amount in relation to IT software which is going to need to be upgraded to accommodate the changes. Quickly, the key, the key changes then, the most significant, well, they're set out in section two point three of the paper, the most significant one is the introduction of a lifetime cap on care to eighty-six thousand pounds. That would start, as I say, in October next year. Because of this, the council will be required to create care accounts to track all individuals' spend towards their care cap, be they public or private, and that's where the significant increase in capacity is, is going to be required. There are changes to the capital thresholds, the amount of personal wealth that an individual may hold before they are impacted by the charging rules, so the upper threshold will increase from twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty pounds to a hundred thousand pounds, that's the minimum amount of capital that someone can hold before they become entitled to council support, local authority support. And the lower threshold will increase from fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty to two, to twenty thousand pounds, and that's the amount, amount below which people are not required to contribute any of their capital. There will be extended rights for full fee payers to request the council, council to commission care on their behalf. This means that people requesting the council to do this will be able to benefit from council contracts and rates, which will be significant for the sector, and the, the rules around top-ups will also be loosened to allow people to pay additional sums towards the cost of their own care, which is not currently within the rules. So section two point four sets out the implications for the council, significant increase in the number of people eligible for financial support from the council, which will go along with the, the upper capital threshold, the upper capital limit increasing to a hundred thousand pounds. We will see an increase in the number of people entitled to council funding. We will need to accommodate a significant increase in care assessments in one form or another in order that we can identify the cost of care and therefore the amount that people will be metering towards their cap over the months and years. And we'll also see an increase in the number of people in care homes funded by the council, where they are funded by top-ups from their, their family or from themselves. The, the report goes into the implications into more detail, there are, there's key pieces of work taking place around understanding what demand this is likely to generate in Sheffield, there's key pieces of work around how we respond to that demand, particularly the number of assessments that will be required from April. There are significant financial implications which are hard to forecast because they depend on the personal wealth of people that are not yet known to the council, but we are assured by government that this will be cost neutral to local authorities. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you Liam, I'm not currently seeing any questions, I might just make, oh, yeah, Kevin?
Thank you Chair, obviously one of the key pieces of this is the recruitment of twenty-five staff to enable that, to do that, and you mentioned in the report that every other council are going to be recruiting those same staff, and we know how difficult it, it is in the current market in terms of attracting those types of staff, so I suppose key comment, question from me is, how can we mitigate against not recruitment to those or any of those twenty-five posts? Because obviously this work is going to happen, we need to do those assessments from April, so what's our contingency?
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's absolutely a key risk for us and for all local authorities. We know, and we'll may come onto it in a, in a subsequent report, that we've got a real challenge with recruitment and retention in adult social care, as all local authorities do, as providers do, and an, an increase in, in demand for, for assessors, social care professionals is going to be, is going to be a, a challenge for the country. We are, we, we, we're, we're looking at different groups of people and are going to be impacted by these reforms and potentially treating them in a slightly different way to try to take the, the demand away from social care professionals as far as we can. We know that there will be some people at the top end that absolutely will need social care, social workers to, to support them and to understand their needs, but we will be working with providers, particularly care homes, who already have a strong relationship with people to be undertaking relatively light touch assessments, and we're working through what that means, and we, we're optimistic that we'll be able to shift quite a significant number of people through reasonably standardised processes and with that relationship that we have with care homes. And the other key piece of work that we're undertaking is in relation to supported self-assessment. So for people with lower needs, can we put together, and this is something that's been looked at nationally as well, so there's lots of learning coming through from other local authorities, but it's something that we're, we're working on actively now is, what would a self-assessment look like? How could we make that work for vulnerable people? What support would be needed? And how might we be able to provide that support in a different way that doesn't require social workers, trained qualified social workers to be at the front end of that? But absolutely, there is nevertheless a risk that we are putting more demand on an already precious and limited capacity within the city.
How do you feel where we are in comparison with everyone else who's going through this same?
And I think we're, we're, I think we've, we're in a similar position in, in many ways, although we already do have some additional capacity that's been brought in over the last twelve, eighteen months for recovery work related to the budget, so we have some staffing in place that we would hope we would be able to retain and hold over, and also we've got some really positive work that's taking place around the adult social care operating model at the moment, which is improving the arrangements for our social care workforce and making that a more attractive place to be. So I'm hopeful that we will be in a, as strong a position as we possibly can be by the time we, we undertake this recruitment.
Thank you. Ruth?
Thank you. Just wanted to try and understand some of the numbers a little bit in the section, comparing sections two, three and four. So under living and aging well, there's a fairly straightforward correlation, I think, if I've understood it correctly, between the fees pressure and the external funding that offsets that, if I've understood that correctly. And similarly in mental health.
Ruth, is this, the, just, just, Chair, we're saying you're looking, this is, this is pure, I think what we're moving on to with Liam shortly might be what you're referring to currently.
We're in the wrong report? Oh, apologies, looking at wrong numbers, I'll come back, I'll come back to that.
If you want to come back, that's fine, I'd just make a comment, if you want to come back at it.
Okay, sorry.
So I just want to come up with a couple of comments and, 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 sorry, I'm sorry that Charles is not here, because I know he's done an awful lot of work and as, and Charles was doing an awful lot of work very early on when we knew about this to try and work out what the impact on, on us would be, and it's obviously still to some extent unclear with, you know, what, how this will end up, but I think it's worth saying that, that actually the change in terms of the number of people who will be coming through the council to have their care commissioned is huge, and I don't think most people out there in Sheffield probably realise that Sheffield and every council is, will be vastly changing in terms of the number of people that we will be commissioning care for, and with that comes a lot of challenges that this paper lays out and how we're addressing those, but also I think opportunities, because if we believe that we can commission care well, both in the home and, and in care homes, then the more people we can get the benefits of that for should be welcome, and also the way, gives us more information, more abilities to look at more preventative approaches to ensure people, you know, that need for care, where possible is delayed, and people are kept, you know, can be helped to become, live more healthy lives. So I think, I think there are, far beyond what this report comes, potential, you know, but potent, potent, potential positive outcomes. I would just say a bit slightly more of a political comment, that a lot, we are expecting, and there's no reason not to expect significant amounts of government funding as this report lays out to help us through at least the majority of the kind of bumps here, but it is also, people, you know, will realise that this government are also in the process of reversing the large part of that funding for that, which is the national insurance increase, and I make no comment on whether increasing that insurance is a good thing or a bad thing, but they set this out in the first place, funding it one way, and they've just completely reversed, they're completely reversing, not all, but a good proportion of the way they say they've done that. Of course, they are saying they're continuing to be committed to this, but members of public who expect their national politicians, as they do clearly their local politicians, to be, you know, guardians of public finances and to say what they, you know, believe around, around the way they fund public services, ought to be very sceptical about, you know, about the forthcoming plans for the funding of this element of social care, not to mention the, you know, scandalous underfunding of social care more generally, so I think there's a lot of questions to be asked, but I do obviously hope that the government are true to their word, that the changes that they make that are outlined in this paper will be kept to. Have we got any more questions or comments here? To thank Liam and to return to the recommendations, are we all in support of the, the recommendations, the, for them here? Any dissent? Not seeing any, I think we can say they are agreed. And we are staying with Liam, I think, for the next item, if that's right, we've got item number twelve, which is our financial update. We've got item number twelve, which is our financial update. Sorry, paper change time. So I think we are on, so I've got one, four, five in the thick report. The thickest report, one, four, five. Sorry, I should have been pulling that more generally as we go along. Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So this paper, Adult Social Care Financial Update and Progress with the Financial Recovery Plan. This report is designed to update the committee on progress with delivery of our planned savings in twenty-two, twenty-three. The report also sets out more detail on the funding of adult social care, our use of resources and the development of our financial governance arrangements. So last month, this committee approved the governance framework for adult health and social care. This month, a breakdown of the processes and the development plan for the use of resources domain, which is one of the five domains within our framework, is included in Appendix One. The, the use of resources, the development plan consolidates actions underway to manage our resources effectively. It sets out the framework for our financial governance and improvement, including taking lessons from self-assessment processes, from internal audit and from external review, as well as benchmarking with comparable authorities. It describes a programme of work that has been scheduled through these budget reports for the policy committee. And will include detailed and transparent information on the use of our funds and resources. The second key part of the report is the forecast delivery of the in-year savings position. Coming into this year, we were forecasting forty-three-point-two million pounds' worth of pressure. That's set out in section three-point-one-point-three. Of that, twenty-five-point-two million pounds' worth of savings were put forward for this financial year. Table three-point-one-point-four shows our latest forecast, which is for the delivery of seventeen-point-one million of the twenty-five-point-two million pounds' with the savings. That's sixty-eight percent forecast of the total and an improvement on the forecast which we came to the committee with in June. The key challenge for us in the delivery of these savings is review throughput and our ability to put capacity into the, the review of people with high-cost packages, people who saw their package of care increase during Covid or who saw, or who have seen large packages of increase arise during Covid. The, the volume of those reviews required to meet the target is really very high and it's, and it's not been possible to keep pace thus far with, with the required rate. We do have very robust and significant plans for increasing capacity of reviews. But the, the, our ability to bring forward those savings in year is a challenge and it is, looks likely that a proportion of those will slip into next year. There are a range of other actions which have taken place over the course of the last couple of months to improve our, our financial governance and arrangements, use of resources and benchmarking, which we can find in Appendix Three to this report. We've had local government association feedback and a joint NHS and local authority funding bit support out of hospital discharge. Section Four sets out our effective use of resources firstly in relation to benchmarking and an analysis, extensive benchmarking that you can see in section, Appendix Three, and an analysis on the use of resources which you can see in Appendix Two. Appendix Two sets out the historic funding arrangements for adult social care and there'll be more information on that to come in November. There's also information provided in relation to one-off funding of, to provide workforce capacity to the care sector and improve access to home care support, one-off funding from, from the NHS which came through last financial year. The benchmarking in Appendix Three describes how adult social care expenditure has increased significantly during the Covid pandemic and has a higher rate than competitors. It describes a comparable spend on employees to core cities and the lowest increase on staffing over the last five years. It also describes, provides lots of useful information which will, which, which has been taken into consideration for our, our business planning, which will be a report that we'll consider later on in this agenda. But benchmarking around how many people we support with home care services, growth that we've seen, where our costs are higher than other comparative authorities gives us a really strong lead on where our focuses can be for twenty-three, twenty-four. We've had local authority, sorry, local government association review of adult social care budget in the last couple of months and that feedback is provided in Section Four. It's also incorporated into the development plan in Appendix One, which we've also referenced. Any questions?
Thank you, Liam. Not currently seeing any hands up, so I will start. If we look at the, it's quite recent, isn't it, feedback from the LGA? Just in terms of, I'm just interested in some of the, the meaning of some of the things they've said and you might not always be able to help us with this. They, they make mention about looking at the, what's the word that they use here? I'm trying to think the word. Consider your approach to target setting to ensure a more equitable distribution of budget saving requirement. Does that, are they suggesting that we, that Sheffield City Council is asking the wrong thing about adult social care? Is that you're, that you're reading about mine? Because I'm interested if that's what they are saying.
So they made an observation that the council approved a total saving programme of fifty-two-point-seven million in twenty-two, twenty-three, with adult health and social care responsible for the delivery of twenty-five-point-two million of that. And the LGA recommended consideration be given to the development of multi-year savings. So their, their observation was that the way the savings were allocated meant that adult social care had a significant proportion of the council's overall savings total and that that was a significant ask for a one-year period.
Okay, that's, that's, that's interesting. I do think that in general, the, the LGA is obviously helpful partly because they have that, that cross-council view. But I also think that for this committee, it's also the, the, whether we have a, a strong enough balance in terms of those multi-year approaches or are we asking too much of year-by-year savings? But I think that's certainly something that, you know, officers and, and members need to consider in the next couple of months as we get further down the line to, you know, what are, you know, what are our next saving poses look like? And whether or not that, you know, given the challenges that you've expressed, Liam, around simply to achieve some of those review-based savings lines within year, whether members should be asking officers to consider whether we can spread things out over, over a number of years. Obviously, there is obviously challenges whether the corporate finance, you know, side, you know, allows that. But I think that's a, a, a helpful challenge for us as members and officers in the next couple of months really about, about achieving those savings in quite a time and space when, as we know, particularly the sort of people we deal with here, we're not simply dealing with, you know, staff resources. It's, it, it, it's very complex the way our budget is spent. So I think that's helpful. Angela, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm glad you've asked that question because I've asked that question in private before the LGA came back to us with exactly that. It's adult health and social care has been asked this year to save forty-seven percent of all the savings that the council has to make in year. So that is extremely challenging. And what I'm worried about, Liam, is the spillage. Because obviously, any spillage of anything we don't save this year is going to move into next year's budget. And that, for me, is a big concern in terms of moving forward. And I think we have to have some discussions about how we achieve as much as possible, keeping in mind that what we want is the best for people.
Thanks, Angela. Not seeing any, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I have a quick question, followed by a comment. So the question is, I mentioned earlier about better partnership working with, particularly with health, but also with, you know, sort of bringing services more close together within our own, within the council itself as well. I'm just wondering what scope there is to identify perhaps through budget or whatever process to, you know, that, that might have access to other funds through those routes? And my comment is, I'll get this in now because I think it's, we must, you know, I'd like to thank the, the officers across the piece for the, the amount of work that's been put into this. It's a, it's a very challenging budget and it's, it's involved a lot of work. And I do know, because I've been, I've attended some of the workshops that's taken place, just that the, the, the amount of work to identify some difficult, you know, some difficult areas. And I think that we, as a committee, we need to, you know, express our thanks to the, to Alexis and the other officers, Liam and so forth, for the amount of work they've done. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, I'm not seeing any further questions.
Sorry, I had a question in that.
Liam, sorry.
Thank you. So when we've got a significant financial challenges, we do, I, I guess we have, we have to look. We can't, we can't do it solely from within our service boundaries. And we are looking out to health and speaking with our health colleagues continually about a range of, a range of opportunities, you know, about how we, how we can get greater efficiency together. And there's actively a piece of work taking place at the moment around the Better Care Fund and what opportunities there might be in that shared space. And that will be a report that we bring back to this committee in November to set out any shared findings from, from that. We continue to work with our health colleagues on shared funding of individual support through CHC in Section one-one-seven and how we can get a more person-centred approach, a single conversation taking place with, with, with people in relation to that. We are looking at contracts. We are looking at services, provider services, all services and what opportunities we have to do things differently as a system in order to make adult health and social care more sustainable and deliver better outcomes, which ultimately is better for us and better for people. So, yeah, absolutely, we're in that space.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Talking about that, and I've got Ruth, if that's all right.
Thanks, Chair. Wanted to just touch on the, you mentioned of the Better Care Fund and it, just coming back to the, I've mentioned this earlier in a different context, that the implication of integration and, you know, now that we're, we're formally in an era of integration. And I wondered what, what you're getting from the ICB at the moment or across the integrated care system in terms of pushing the focus to prevention? And in practical terms, you know, that means moving, moving funding resources from, perhaps from health to care or from health to public health? And that, that kind of slight modal shift of how money is looked at across the system? I just wondered what, what sort of early indications you might have got from, as to the direction of travel, as it were, from the ICB?
So I think, I think it is, it is very early stages in that regard. But what I would point to is the, the agreement in the last couple of weeks to a significant amount of funding that's coming from health to support hospital discharge. And that has been, will be available to adult health and social care providers for the coming months. So there is, there, there is, there is good work happening. And there is, I think, cause for optimism that we will work well together in the future. But we, we do need to continue to make progress in that area.
Thank you. We're not seeing any more questions. I think we'll just move to the recommendations. And do I see any dissent or agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to the item seventeen of the month for budget monitoring. Who have we got today to present this report, please? Jane, hi.
Hi. I'm Jane, Head of Accounting. So the report is to present the overall council general fund revenue position as at month four, twenty-two, twenty-three, which is at the end of July. It's the standing item on all the policy committee work plans to bring you up to speed with the council's overall in-year numbers. The, the front part of the paper presents the council position and the last part specifically towards the adult social care committee. So the council is forecasting an overspend of twenty-one-point-seven million against the budget this year. Nineteen and a half relates to the people portfolio. The month three position was twenty-point-four overspend, which was one-point-four million worse in month four. The change from month three was largely due to the pay award, which was factored into the forecast this, in month four forecast, which was set at one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five pounds per person. This has not been agreed yet, but that's best guess estimates at this stage. That equated to an overall pressure to the general fund of three-point-three million. This was slightly offset by improvements elsewhere across the council that, the council that mitigated the full impact of that pay pressure. So there was some savings in children's, some transport and some in the Strategy and Resources Committee. The reasons for the variances in general are similar to the prior months and that mainly attributable to the shortfall on budget implementation plans, which already account for the nineteen-point-seven million of the twenty-one-point-seven million overall overspend for the council. The underlying position is potentially worse. We have contributions from provisions in year which are mitigating the overall impact of some of the inflationary pressures that we're seeing in energy and indexed inflation-led contract costs. What this means is, because we've been prudent in estimates last year, we've been able to offset some of the in-year costs, but that's not going to be sustainable going into future years. The adult social care committee position is fairly consistent, so it's set to overspend by twelve-point-four million at month four, which is half a million worse than the position reported at month three. The pay offer created a seven-hundred-thousand pounds pressure for the committee this month. Eight-and-a-half million relates to the bit shortfalls. Eight and a half million relates to the BIP shortfalls and some of the underlying, and their further underlying pressures in purchasing activity. Two million pounds and staffing overspend as well, two million. Over eleven million of the BIP savings are related to reviewing and reducing the cost of high-cost packages for care, as Liam discussed in his report, that were put in place during the Covid pandemic. Delivery of the savings is currently falling somewhat short due to resource capacity constraints and the ability to not be able to complete those reviews because of recruitment difficulties. So I think in terms of the reasons for variances, that's kind of been presented in delivery plans earlier. So that's everything in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got any questions on that report? I think, you know, members will be aware and would be informed of the, is the month five report coming through? But obviously, there's a delay in the publication here. That's just the way that the schedule happens. So any questions there? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Jane, for that. I think we just need to note this. Any dissent? Are we agreed to note that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Right. And so the next item, I just want to remind members, does contain exempt information. So if either presenter or members want to ask anything or say anything about exempting, just please flag it up. And we will, we will deal with that. So that is item nine. Sorry, am I, have we got, just get this right. Liam, are you presenting here on item nine? So I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't expecting...
Sorry, have I jumped the gun, Chair?
I think we've got item nine first, but I was slightly surprised you sat down, Liam. Sorry, I was just wondering what the... I think we've got Tim and Louisa first. Sorry. Is that all right? Sorry. I was just slightly working out we'd had a, you know, personnel shift in the council. I hadn't been quite aware of it the last few days. No, that's great. Yeah, so yes, and both the items, yes, this item and the next item contain this information. So if anyone wants to refer to it anyway, let us know. We'll have to cease the webcast. And I don't believe we have any members of public in the room anymore. So that shouldn't be an issue. We'll have to cease the webcast. If we need to, please flag it up. Okay. Hi, Louisa, and hi again, Tim. Please go ahead. Thanks.
Hello there. Yeah, Tim Gallin, Director of Secarly Mental Health. And I'm introducing Louisa King, who's Commissioning Manager, and has done a lot of detailed work around this report, particularly on the market position statement and the prevention commissioning. Okay, so I just want to provide a bit of outline of the purpose and recommendations, and then a bit of background, and then we can take questions. The purpose of this report is really to present the first market position statement for mental health. I think Sheffield's the cancer scene, which is a really good thing. Its aim is to talk directly to providers and explain what our commissioning tensions are around mental health. But it's also relevant for people who use services and carers. The paper also presents a commissioning approach to prevention services, you know, particularly with the voluntary community sector. The recommendations are to approve the delivery plan and the market position statement, and to approve the approach to commissioning the prevention services, and finally to agree six monthly reporting. The background to this report is really the return of our social workers from the trust. So we've had social workers seconded across to the Health and Social Care Trust for nearly twenty years, and we're bringing the social workers back into local authority. And that, that sort of transition informs much of the work around mental health at the moment. The key issues we've got in that transition is, of course, maintaining some co-location arrangements with health, IT access in terms of networking and recording systems, recruitment and retention, practice development as the social workers come back into local authority, and maintaining quality of providers in the sector. Specifically in relation to the market position statement, there's some key themes in there. First one's about continual partnership working and cooperation with the voluntary community sector, a focus on quality practice and help supporting providers to deliver, a keen focus on developing independence and recovery models with providers, and also our staff. An emphasis on some new accommodation that we require in the city around person, supporting people with personality disorders and particularly complex needs around mental health and learning disability and autism. And two final things, focus on carers, and there is an element of fees and costs. Finally, in terms of the approach to prevention, we've got a budget of six hundred and fifty thousand across eight or so services. And the problem is that we've inherited those services over a number of years. They kind of evolved. And actually, we need to get more efficient and more effective and more strategically relevant. And we've developed an approach to doing that, which Louisa can talk us through in detail. In summary, we've got a, if you like, a get ideas, a test for effectiveness, and then a commission once we've established those concepts. And of course, throughout all of that, we want to make sure that no service users go without service. Okay, so with that brief summary, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have questions here? Ruth?
I don't know whether my questions will relate to private parts of the report. I'm not sure I've got questions.
I suspect that if you don't think they do, they probably don't. If you've read them, if there's quite specific information in that, in that private section, I think, probably.
I've got questions around the commissioning delivery plan from page fifteen onwards. Is that bit okay?
Gosh, is that the closed section? Okay, well.
I can leave that to the end, if you like.
Would, if you want to ask a question, that's probably the best thing to do, I think, probably.
I can leave that bit to the end and...
Yes, yeah, that's probably best, yes.
In which case, a couple of fairly straightforward things. Just, I just want to pick up on the Mental Health Partnership Board website information, which is probably not a question you're expecting. But Google, a Google search for that, the Mental Health Partnership Board takes you to a defunct CCG webpage. And I just wonder if that could be updated as soon as possible for some continuity of that information? And the status of the Mental Health Partnership Board now that the CCG is defunct?
Certainly, we'll make sure that that's addressed, yeah. In terms of broader background to information advice, as I mentioned in my previous report, we have a new approach to developing better information and advice across the city. And the report will be coming here, I think, in November or possibly January, I'm not sure. But we have a full report too about our approach to information advice then.
And if I may, Chair, just a question around the frequent mentions of co-production and cooperation with external partners and stakeholders in developing strategy. And I'm really interested in that. And I'm just wondering if you could just elaborate a little bit on, for example, in two point four, about the strategy being developed with individuals experiencing mental ill health, carers and partners. Just, if you could just expand a little bit, just out of interest, on how that kind of co-production is being undertaken? What sort of forums are open to people who have used the services and that sort of thing?
Thanks for your question. So the consultation on the strategy that's mentioned in two point four, specifically with service users, went to a range of different service user groups. And that was actually probably about two years ago, so that happened pre-Covid. The stage that we're at now is to take it to various different kind of provider organisation boards. But we'll also be taking it to the Rethink Alliance, which is a new alliance of all sorts of provider organisations and experts by experience, who, they've kind of produced, come together to produce a new collaboration together. So I think it's a brand new board. So I'm meeting the Chair in a couple of weeks' time, so it's quite fresh. And that will be a chance for us to talk to them about that strategy and how we can do co-production going forward. If it would help for me to provide you some more information about that grouping, because it's quite new, then I can send you some stuff, if that'd be helpful.
I think that sounds interesting. Thanks. I'm quite interested in how wide you cast the net and sort of the general principle of, you know, the saying of nothing about us without us, how that's incorporated in, you know, real lived experience of services.
I'll send you some information over.
Are we seeing any more questions on the non-closed stuff, the stuff that doesn't have restricted all over it? If not, I'm assuming, councillor Milson, that you would want your question asked before we, the only recommendations. So I think the next stage will be to go into closed session for a moment to allow that question to be asked. Is that all right? Flag once we're there. Okay, so welcome back if you're watching online. Just gone into a short private section. Are there any more questions on any non-private parts of the report? If there aren't, just going to thank Tim and Louisa and go to the recommendations. Are we, there's four recommendations at the front of the report. In agreement? Any dissent here? Not seen your hands? So I think we're going to all agree that there. Thank you. And with that, now we've reached the guillotine. So what I'm asking members now is, can we agree for an extension of up to thirty minutes for the final item? We may not need all of that, but is, agree there? Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, I suppose. And I think, because they're pretty good, I think we can get Liam back for this one here. And a similar reminder is the last item. I think it is, I think the proposal here, more formally what we'll do, is allow Liam to present on the first section. We'll ask any questions on that. And then, then we will, then we will, we will pause the webcast. Then can I have any comments from Liam or any questions on the closed section before returning back to the webcast for the recommendations? Thank you. Go ahead, Liam.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this report is to set out the financial pressures facing the Health and Social Care Policy Committee next year, twenty-three, twenty-four, to provide an update on progress to date in identifying mitigations for these pressures. Each committee is required to deliver a cash standstill budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, which requires us to meet mitigations for any service pressures over and above the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. This is so that the council can achieve a balanced position for twenty-three, twenty-four by the time the Strategy and Resources Committee meets on the twelfth of October next month. So adult health and social care is facing new financial pressures in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five point zero four four million pounds. That's detailed in table, in section one point five, and in more detail in the closed part B of the report. Savings, options, proposals have been developed totaling the same figure, twenty-five point zero four four million. And those savings are broken down in tables A and B in sections one point seven and one point eight. The proposals in is table A, total just short of twenty-two million pounds. These have been updated from last year or newly developed in line with our vision and strategy, our existing change programme and following benchmarking with other local authorities, or through external review. Three million pounds worth of savings. The balance is described in table B. And these are additional proposals which have been brought forward in order to further reduce costs in twenty-three, twenty-four and to achieve a balanced position for twenty-three, twenty-four in line with the requirement for this committee. All pressures and savings are described in more detail in the closed part B. And this committee is recommended to note, as this committee's initial response to the Strategy and Resources Committee's request, the set of budget proposals set out in this report, including part B. More work will now be required to further develop these proposals, mitigate the impacts, and work with the committee over the coming months to arrive at a final set of proposals in November.
Thank you, Liam. And can I ask, many members have any questions, you know, about the narrative of the first section of the report? Obviously, we can't, if we, we need to go in closed section before we discuss any of the things that are in the tables, you know, the detail of the, of the proposals. Angela?
Just a comment, Chair. I just want to say that it's taken a really long time to get to this point. And the three spoke people for the three political groups have worked very, very closely with officers over the last two months. So these are not set in stone. I just proposals, I just want to kind of just say that. That's us working towards a request from the top, if so to speak, for next year. It would be interesting to just remind people, Liam, what percentage the twenty-five million of savings that we've got to find represents in terms of the savings that the council has to make in total? I was trying to remember the amount. I'm sure I've been told, but I can't remember.
It's something, I think, of the order of forty-four per cent, fifty-two per cent?
It's fifty-two million savings altogether.
Yeah. So it's fifty-two million pounds savings worth altogether. So it's in the, it's in the forties.
So it's the same as last year, basically. So it's again the same, that's why I was a bit confused, because I thought it can't be exactly the same, but it is exactly the same as this year. Thank you.
Right, okay. Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Liam. Ruth, question on the open part?
Yeah, I can come back to the question that I tried to ask earlier, because I was looking at the wrong pages. I'm just curious.
Yeah, as long as it's, it's not about specific proposals.
It's on, no, the early pages of the report, about the, it's so under living and aging well in two, adults with a disability in three, and mental health in four. Just looking, I'm just looking at the number, the numbers laid out. So I just wanted to check that I've understood this correctly, that effectively, the fees pressure in two, living and aging well, is more or less offset by external funding? Is that, is that more or less correct?
That's our, that's our planning assumption for now. There's a, there's a lot of assumptions behind that around wages, around inflation rates, and around the fair cost of care. So lots of uncertainty. But yeah, broadly, as things stand, the assumption is that the six million is in grants will largely offset the older people's fee rate increase.
And then there's a similar scenario in, in four, mental health and safeguarding. The fees pressure more or less offset by an amount of income and funding, if you like?
It is, but that's a coincidence that the numbers are similar. They're not related. So there's no, there's no external grant income for, for fee rates in mental health. That income and funding relates to income relating to outcome payments and other income from health relating to section one one seven monies, which is partly a recognition of the income that is already coming into those budgets and partly in recognition of some of the work that we need to do to, to, to review people with mental health, ill health.
Okay, thanks. And so then, adults with a disability in section three, there's a very large pressure of fees and growth that doesn't seem to be offset by anything coming in. And I just, I just wanted to get a bit more understanding around that. Is it the case that there's, we don't expect any government funding towards that particular sector of care? And is that, is that working on an assumption or knowledge? Is it like a safe, a safe assumption or knowledge that there won't be any income stream for that particularly? that particularly?
Thanks. So the significant grant that we're, that we're forecasting for next year is a fair cost of care grant, which is in relation to fee rates in older people's support and also there is some grant that we're expecting through in relation to charging reform, which is the item I spoke about earlier. The, for people, adults with a disability, working age people, there's unlikely to be significant grant income. We're not forecasting any government grant in that area that I can think of at the moment. And you're right to, to highlight, of course, that the adults with a disability is an area where we have, we've struggled to meet pressures in the, in the way that we have in other areas. And I think that that reflects the fact that we are seeing growth and we are forecasting increases particularly in fee rates as they're due to inflation, due to rising wages, but also growing demands that we've seen over the years. But the benchmarking that I brought forward in the previous report doesn't identify the same opportunities that there may be, for example, for people with, for older people where we've seen significant increase during and since Covid, where we think there's, there's really scope to, to bring packages of support back down, given that the environment's changed since the pandemic emergency. We're just not seeing evidence that there's as much scope for people with a disability and that's, that's, that's what's coming through there and why we've still got a gap, I think.
Okay, and then just finally, very quickly, the, in paragraph 3.4, there's mention that there's some evidence of higher residential unit costs for people with physical disabilities in Sheffield in the benchmarking that you've done. I wonder, is there any, is there any background to that and any scope for that changing in the near future?
Yeah, so that's something that's come through in the benchmarking. We can see that it, it seems that there is something to go there, go out there. We'll be undertaking some work to introduce a framework for, for residential care with the potential to bring in standard rates for, for people with, with disability and that process should see us get into that, that sort of question.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Liam. Are there any more questions on the open part? I think we shall now move in a sense to the closed section so we can look at the restricted part of the report. Okay, we'll wait one moment when that's done, thanks. Okay, so we're now returning, welcome back, everybody. We've got our four recommendations at the start of this report. Do I see any dissent for these? No, all agreed? That's great, okay, and, and that's agreed? Thank you. And really, that now brings us very close to the end of the meeting. So all I may say is that there will be another policy committee meeting, for all those who enjoyed it, on Wednesday 16th of November. Thank you all.